Item B, deliberate an act on resolution twenty fourteen dash nineteen, fireworks restrictions. Mr. McGowan, do you have any comments on this, or Chief McGowan?
Well, no, uh, Chief, we'll see if he does. Remember that we'd done it earlier, and I didn't realize when we did it, that it only lasted for thirty days. And this is why we're doing it again, Chief.
Do you approve the fireworks restrictions on the water, uh, and for extended, uh, twenty, uh, thirteen? And do you think that's not bad? It shouldn't be too, though, because of fireworks, all women, off the field, in the, uh, eight, uh, six.
July sixth.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I just said, "Thank you."
Basically, this resolution is just restricting, uh, certain fireworks, like these, like permissible ground fireworks, that shall not drive behind trees, vegetation, and, uh, and people of high fire danger.
Well, I, I believe, uh, Mayor Protem, that, uh, that the enforcement part of this, it should be pretty strict, especially if the, if the fire dangers remain high, and the winds like it are, I think that they, they should be very strict on this. And I'm one of the best fireworks handlers there is, but I would like to see that it be very strict.
Thank you, Chief. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to adopt resolution of twenty fourteen dash nineteen.
We'll make a motion to adopt, uh, resolution twenty fourteen dash nineteen, fireworks restrictions.
Second, we have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? All in favor, vote by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same vote. Motion carries. Moving on to item number C, deliberate an act on Silver Spur Land and Cattle LLC Communications Base on Eagle Tail Mountain.
Uh, Mayor Protem Sagata, uh, this one had, had gone out, they ju- they had different people, and it had, they didn't realize it, we didn't realize it, and so, this is the new agreement that we have with them, uh, Mr. Porsham has gone over it and everything. This is for our fire department and all, uh-
Fire Department, uh, County Sheriff, and, uh-
Mr. Campbell, the waterworks, because they use it, uh, as they go on the Cimarron drop. And so, uh, it is recommended that it be approved.
We'll make a motion to approve, uh, the agreement, uh, released between the Silver Spur, uh, Silver Spur Silver School Land and Cattle Company, LLC Communications and Eagle Tail.
We have a motion to approve this agreement with Silver Spur Land and Cattle.
Question?
Question.
Do you have an insurance carrier on this? Who's the insurance carrier on, on this?
Couldn't answer that, I will get you an answer, I do not.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Right.
Second, we have a motion and a second, are there any other comments? I would just like to point out that the term of this lease is worth here the five years, and-
Yes, sir. The other one on Silver Spur can't-
It's back to October first, of twenty fourteen. Are there any other comments, questions? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Uh, aye.
All opposed? Item G, deliberate an act on the union agreement between the City of Raton and the Raton Firefighters Local Two Three Seven Eight.
Mayor Protem, uh, Mr. Berry, Chief Matthews, and Mr. Campbell was on, uh, what I've always done is I've given them the percentage of money that we would have, and from there, they did the negotiations with, uh, Fire Department and everything, and this is what we have come up with. And, uh, just give you the brief, uh, the changes that are in it, uh, general pay increase of two percent for all the members, the hazmat technician incentive went from twenty-five cents to fifty cents an hour on that, uh, addition of twenty-five cents per hour for members that achieve firefighter two certification, effective, uh, beginning in next year, not this year, it'll be beginning of next year. That is one thing that they have asked. We put in the same thing, uh, the college incentive for them, the same as we did the police department. No one at this time qualifies. We did, just as we did with the police department, raised the first year people's uniform allowance, and then it goes back to what it was, it went from a thousand, eighteen hundred for the first year, and then that is just the first year of employment. And then, uh, twenty-one plus years, uh, the longevity went to one fifty, and the EMS and fire instructor incentive went from fifty to seventy-five, but no one qualifies at this time, and it is a two-year contract. So, that's basically the, the things that they have in it. We have, uh, Chief Matthews here, and we also have, uh, Captain Burke, if they have something that they would like to say.
There is one little question. The, uh, incentive for instructors, EMS, fifty cents, and separate from that, the fire instructors, the staff, uh, not just go from fifty to seventy-five, you know, fifty to five, and, and, uh, nobody, uh, for that, for that.
Any questions for Mr. McGowan, or Chief McGowan?
Rank and file, and everybody approve it. Rank and file, approve there.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Do you have any kind of motion to approve this union contract, so that Raton Firefighters Local Twenty Two Seventy Eight?
So, move.
We have a motion, we have a second.
We'll make a motion to accept the, uh, the new contract between City of Raton and the Raton Firefighters Local Twenty Two Seventy Eight.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Charles, we have a motion, I think we'll take it, and John, we'll set a motion, and a second, and we'll get that. Are there any other discussions? At this time, I'd like to take the roll call, vote for number forty-three, and say, "Thank you."
Mayor Protem Sagata?
Yes.
Mayor Matt?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Jackman?
Yes.
Commissioner Jackman.
Yes.
Uh, we have a new contract, thank you. Item E, deliberate an act on the North Central New Mexico Economic Development Fiscal Agent Agreement between City of Raton and-
You know, Mayor Protem, Mayor Commissioners, that we've been looking to see how we could get this, taking this into consideration, and who could handle it, and naturally, uh, Mr. Sagata, I know that you're very interested because of the leaking senior citizens of- and hopefully, we can, after passing this and everything, hopefully, that they will accept it and everything, and then we can get started. I know Mr. Berry and Mr. Little have everything ready, uh, once it is accepted, to put out a bid to take care of these things for the senior citizens. And it is four percent, you know, the county, uh, put one together, and it's four, five, and six percent. So, we're saving several hundred dollars here by going this way, they're four percent on everything, and so, it is recommended. And I will speak to it later under, uh, audio assistance. We're doing everything in our power to, uh, correct past, uh, problems and not taking care of things over, uh, several years. Hopefully, that we have it taken care of by the end of this year, that this will not be an issue. Now, we realize that the different departments and all, they can determine if they must have a fiscal agent, each department, and they're determining that we had to have it. I'd asked Mr. Sagata if they would allow, uh, the county, but then he found out that the county is having a problem along with his, uh, down at Springer. So, here we are, uh, it is recommended that we do this, so that we can proceed as soon as they, uh, give us the approval to get these things taken care of.
So, I'd just like to make a comment that, um, I'd like to see what happened, like, we walked in at senior center yesterday morning to have water on the shared floor, and, uh, unfortunately, we're gonna have to replace a lot of tiles on that floor.
I will move that we, uh, go ahead and accept, uh, North Central New Mexico Economic Development as our fiscal agent at four percent.
We have a motion for Mayor Matt to accept, and, uh, yeah, we have a second.
Okay.
We have a motion at a second, is there any other discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item F, deliberate an act on Gordon Environmental Task Order Number One, Engineering and Professional Services for landfill closure. Mr. McGowan.
Mayor Protem Sagata, Mayor Matt, and Commissioners, uh, we were able to get this the other day, Mr. Berry and I orally from the State Department, uh, and Mr. Graypole were on the line for over an hour in the conference call, deliberating and determining the different things that need to be done, as we are heading toward closure of the landfill, and the sooner the better for all of us, and, uh, this will be the first task order, and there will be at least one more, uh, in that group, Mr. Berry?
Okay.
So, it is recommended that, uh, and we've had this for a good while, but in discussions and everything with them, of trying to nail things down, and have things in the order that we think that we need to do things. So, it is recommended, Commissioners, that, uh, we do approve this, so that we can proceed with the things that need to be done in closing the landfill.
I, I don't have a copy of that task order in my package.
Uh, Mayor, it is laying on your desk.
Oh, okay. I have it in there.
If Madam Matt has, uh, any, any objections, I would like to make a motion to approve it.
Do you have a motion for Mr. Charles to approve? Mayor Matt, I think I know. Make a comment of this, put it out, it's worth two thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief. That's what I'm looking for, thank you. That's the last thing, uh, and if I remember correctly, we did approve a contract with Gordon to be our landfill's, uh, for the, the landfill closure, to be our, uh, engineering.
I should say, uh, Commissioners, that the first one that he sent out, uh, over a month ago, was like ninety-seven thousand something, and so, there will be another one, this is the, this is the first one. And, uh, I did go over it with Mr. Berry before we did have the conference call, to see what areas, and we did talk to him about different areas, uh, that we were concerned about, but we feel that at this time, it's within the ballpark of what needs to be done, and the cost that goes with it.
Do you currently have a motion on the table to accept the task order, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Do you have a second, is there any other discussion? At this time, we'll take a vote to accept the task order for Gordon Environment, all in favor?
I don't think that the money involved is to have a roll call vote.
Okay. We can do that. Do you have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Travis?
Yes.
Commissioner Jackman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sagata?
Yes.
Mayor Matt?
Yes.
I'm going to approve. Item number G, deliberate an act on automatic aid agreement between Raton Fire and Emergency Services and Copax County Fire.
We know that this is something, uh, Commissioners, that, uh, Chief Matthews has been working on with the various ones, and he had, uh, uh, Mr. Porsham to go over it. Uh, Chief, do you have anything that you'd like to say and to address this?
Um, so, quite a lengthy one, so we could force him to do it, and do it, uh, in real short, so that, you know, community service, uh, county, uh, in terms of, it's not like anyone's service at all, uh, and it will supplement our team down through it, with the, uh, the whole action. So, can we, can we have a chat on that situation?
Yeah, it's something that we had talked about earlier, at everyone, that he had kept us informed on, of what he is trying to do at the various communities and all.
Yeah, but he hits something very vital for our area, exactly, uh, with those things.
We'll make a motion to accept the automatic aid agreement between the Raton City and the Emergency Services of the Copax County Park.
Do we have a motion for Mr. Jackman, or a second?
I'll second it.
A motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion carries.
Item H, deliberate an act on street closures for the Fourth of July parade and the Fourth of July celebration at Westland Park. Do you have any information on that?
I think it, I think it's the same as, as usual, Second Street won't, as we know, will no longer be involved with anything, so I don't- and I don't think they got it to us, I know they didn't give it to us today, they were looking to see if they had it. I'll just let you know ahead of time, that, uh, I was informed that the VA was wanting to have theirs, uh, here, but I guess they didn't get it in time, and we know that it says thirty days, but I'm alerting you ahead of time, and you'll approve it at the, at the next one to take care of it. Nothing that isn't unusual than, uh, what they've been doing.
The VA is doing a separate event?
Uh, I think so. That's where, what I was informed, uh, but I have not seen that they did not get it done.
The VFW?
What did I say?
The VA, it's the VFW?
VFW. I apologize, uh, VFW.
So, they have, I've heard them, them having a street dance, is that what it is?
Yes.
But I'll bring that to you, but I'm just alerting you now, since it won't have the number of days ahead of time.
This is basically what they've done the last few years, so-
Yes, sir, that's what I-
I'll make a motion and approve.
A motion for Mr. Travis to approve the reconciliation for a celebration for Fourth of July parade, and, and that with the park, right there.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'm very glad to see that, uh, we're being paid for the overtime on our fleet operators.
Item I, deliberate an act on introduction, introduction of an ordinance adopting a point-two-five percent municipal gross receipts tax dedicated to the Aquatic Recreation Center debt service, capital improvements, operations, repair, and maintenance.
Uh, Mayor Protem Sagata, Mayor Matt, and Commissioners, uh, you have before you, this is the introduction of the ordinance, and, uh, it is a quarter cent that, uh, that is left for the commission to, uh, be able to, uh, approve. If this is introduction, uh, there'll be time that we have to, if you approve it tonight, that we'll have to advertise it and everything, and then it would come up for a final vote at the first, uh, meeting in July. Uh, notice that the dedication, uh, section four is Aquatic Recreation Center Debt Service, B, Aquatic Recreation Center Capital Improvements for Parking Lot Drainage, Landscaping, and Energy Efficiency, and C, Aquatic Recreation Center Operations Repair and Maintenance, uh, as we told you, this will be used for, uh, salaries, benefits, and everything, and keeping the operations, we'll put it on, we'll even keep it open longer and everything, and we'll start building up a reserve, uh, to replace the pumps, the different things, as I told you, they went out this year, heating element, we, and it's running twenty-four seven, these things are going out, we do not have money in the budget to, uh, put in these line items, as you well know, and so, this will be something. Also, everyone needs to realize that if this is approved and all, will not go into effect until January first, so you will only receive a happy year to be meeting these things. And as I told you at the very last time, that, uh, if you go to page thirty-one, uh, in your budget, I realize, the two budgets, I've been bringing this issue up to you and letting you know where it is, I've been bringing it up to you for over a year, of how that it costs, out of the general fund, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. You look, we have seventy-one thousand, four eighty-four, and ninety-three thousand, oh forty-nine, out of the general fund, that we're projecting this year, that it, it'll cost, uh, the general fund to keep it open. So, this will allow, we get this through, it will free up this money, hopefully, our economy will be coming back. Things can then be used with this money for other items, other areas, and, uh, we can build up a reserve to take care of the capital improvements that need to be done. I told you before, the drainage was taken out when they built, uh, the aquatic center, as you well know, uh, Mayor Protem, and so, we've got to get that taken care of, that part of the drainage away from the building, since they did not put it in underneath. Am I saying that correctly, Mr. Berry?
Uh, Mr. McGowan, Commissioner, there were a couple of issues with drainage, and we queued out surface drainage issues along with parking lot and finish work, but, uh, I, I, I think, one thing we did point out, is that there was an underdrain that would collect excess moisture if the pool was leaking, and it goes here, very close to the foundation, and if we have any issues with the building, um, that some of the money would go to future building repairs. Now, it's, it's similar to our Cimarron pre-treatment, where that's happened. Our resettlementation basin has, has cracked, it's leaked, and it's caused, uh, pretty extensive damage to the building, which the Water Department is evaluating right now. But that underdrain was removed, uh, from the decision by the, the city and the contractor, or the injection of the, uh, the engineers, but, uh, that's a concern, or the, the, it's similar to, to pre-treatment. So, there's a surface drainage issue, but there's an underdrain issue also, that we can't fix immediately, we just have to monitor this.
Yes, sir, thank you. So, these are just things that, uh, we can take care of and have things in the future.
Can I, might we, uh, explain a little bit on the energy efficiency? Should the, uh, technologies come available for us? That, that could be, because we do have a, quite a debt on this, uh, facility, a little bit.
Yes, sir. Uh, thank you, Commissioner, for bringing that out, I should have, that, as we look forward, and, and talking with, uh, Mr. Berry, and Mr. Phillips, and all, on this, that as, uh, energy efficiency wasn't considered when it was built, and so, as we look at it, and if there's grants out there that we can use, I'm sure that we've got to come up with twenty-five percent, uh, match, and so, this would help us to do this, as we look in the future. We, it'll take a year or two, uh, to get into it, to where that we will be able to start doing some things that take care of it. As I told you, our first, uh, uh, avenue of trying to get things revenue for the city, uh, did fail so now. I know none of you, I don't want to recommend this, but we have no choice, if we're going to try to put the things, and we'll, just to address what Mr. Jenkins thinks that we are not, but I think that we are, as we look at this, to try to free up money within our budget, because we projected three percent less this year, uh, present budget that we're in on GRG, and we're three percent down from that, even, at this point. I'll be able to tell you more the next time, we did get more. The only thing that saved us is the assistance that we were able to get. So, it is recommend, I know it's nothing you want to do, it's not what I want to do, but we have to do things, we have to ma- I told you all along, we've got, we've got some hard decisions to make, this is one of them, I recommend that we make it.
I'll make a motion to approve this introduction of ordinance adopting a twenty-five percent monthly debt useful gross receipts tax dedicated to aquatic center and recreational center debt service.
Do we have a motion to introduce an ordinance? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
Um, I, I will support this ordinance, but I wish we didn't have to put so much of a big portion of our gross receipts into the aquatic center, and I know we all inherited it, but, uh, I wish there was another way we could do this, but I guess there isn't.
A couple of comments I have, one, it's been out a bit pointed out, that there is a sunshine date on this.
Yes, sir, there is a sunset clause, uh, of July first. That's right. I told them, when, when we were talking about it, uh, the sunset, I said, "I feel sure the sunset is on me before it is on this." Uh, but we all know that the two debt services that we have are twenty thirty-two and twenty thirty-three, and we put July the first of twenty thirty-three, and hopefully, we can pay them off sooner. Hopefully, we can pay it off sooner. The sooner we pay it off, the better.
And my other, uh, question, Mayor Matt, you might be able to help me out, since this is an introduction, do we need to read this ordinance tonight, or can we decide without that?
Uh, it'll be published.
It's gonna, yeah.
It'll be published in the paper.
Okay.
Yes.
We hit the highlights, just, I think, so we have a-
And we have them out here, and we'll give them to anyone that comes, that comes in.
You know, I'd really like to say that I had enough calling calls from the community that were in support of this, please do not close the facility. Well, no matter what happens to that facility, we still have that debt hanging over us, and I think this is the only way that we can alleviate that debt. If we were to bulldoze it down and make a new park there, we still have that debt to pay to the New Mexico, uh, Tax Division. So, uh, I think it's very important that we institute this quarter percent increase, and, uh, get that debt service paid down. Being like he, like Mr. McGowan said, it'll free up some money into the general fund, that will help, uh, other projects and save. So, I'm really, I think it's important that we do this at this time.
Do you have a comment for the Commissioner? At this time, Chief, I would call for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Jackman?
Yes.
Commissioner Travis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sagata?
Yes.
Mayor Matt?
Yes.
On the ordinance, introduce.
Thank you.
Uh, item J, deliberate an act on resolution twenty fourteen dash twenty, budget adjustment number nine, for year twenty twenty.
Uh, Mayor Protem Sagata, Mayor Matt, Commissioners, uh, we have in front of you, uh, Mayor Matt, you may not have, uh, the updated one, because, uh, I will get that.
Okay.
Let me, please, while you're looking at that, Mayor-
I have an extra one, I'll give it.
The tigers are under fire, and, uh, I look back.
Chief Matthews, Chief Matthews, Joe Song- Chief Matthews, Chief Matthews, George John, uh, trash fight, and the things that we needed to do for adjustment over here, and then the salt base and water tax, so that's why you haven't had the updated one.
In this, is there a budget? Do we, have we budgeted for the training for the audit, for the two entities to come-
We hadn't, as I told you earlier, Mayor, that we have money available-
But it is unapproved, isn't it?
Any other questions for Mr. McGowan? I understand the motion to adopt resolution twenty fourteen dash twenty.
I'll make that motion to accept resolution twenty dash fourteen, dash twenty, budget adjustment, or number nine, F Y fourteen.
The motion from Mr. Jacko, or is that second?
I'll second.
I have a motion, and second, is there any further discussion? And Matt, any more questions? And as that goes, I'll call for votes, all in favor, vote for a tie of eyes.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Mr. McGowan, you're up.
And then go to some of our other buildings that we have. We have them on a priority list, and this was number one. Uh, next item, and goes back to Mayor Matt, Audit Assistant, RCI, was here June fourth, fifth and sixth for updating our capital assets and training for the city water works and RPS. And we think that, I think there was only like eight items when we met with them, that we were getting taken care of, because they were made out of, bought with federal grants. We gotta look back and find and make sure it's marked that way that we have it taken care of on that. And so hopefully, that is in good shape. Pinefield, Meacham Company will be here the week of June twenty-third to assist with their general ledger and any other comments they have for our audit. And so I know that I've made it a priority, and I know that the mayor has, and you as Commissioners and all, that we get this taken care of. Many years in the making, we're trying to get it taken care of, and I feel that we're doing everything possible to do this. Next item, the solid waste audit, right here, you can see, this is what we received at this time, the solid waste audit. And please feel free to come and look at it. It's ninety percent complete. Mr. Berry and Mr. Phillips are reviewing, making corrections, deletions and additions. And like I say, I have the draft copy for you to look at. We will also, at a future date, have a public meeting over the new rules and regulations that we're looking at before submitting ordinances that, for the commission to pass, to comply with what we finally come up with in the, in our audit study. This will probably be at the end of July for the public meeting, or sometime in August. It's according to how things proceed and how we are able to get things done. Uh, also, you have in here, and we've given it out to everyone, and it's on our website, about the convenience center now, that we're really asking people to, it's open six days a week now for them to bring things out there from eight to three-thirty. We have places for them to, for recycling as they're out there, to take care of these things. Uh, also, of course, we're asking them to separate it, and by doing this, and last Saturday being the first Saturday that we've had it open for people, we're really hoping that now they will take pride in their neighborhood and all, and quit dumping, they had to haul it to the dumpster, please quit dumping by the dumpster and everything, and take it on out to the convenience center, as we're calling it now. And Mr. Berry is here, and I think he has an update and some information for the commission, but, and I also want to bring up our C and D, that the contractors and all, we're still encouraging them, well, they must call the roll-off for them to be using that. But we're gonna have to proceed here one step at a time, as we're getting things done and educating the public. Uh, Mr. Berry, you said you had some things you wanted to update us with tonight, and thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. McGowan. Mr. Mayor Protem, Commissioner, Mayor, just to try to update, there has been some changes in solid waste, and there are plenty of changes proposed, planned and coming up, so I can answer any questions that we have. But just to recap of where we're at, the city has implemented the use of the Wilkins traders in the loading ramp, loading facility that we have at the landfill for those. That's the walking floor trader that we don't, are not required to dump over the top of the trader into. Those, that equipment is working pretty well for us, and we are taking MSW to the Fountain landfill, that's between Pueblo and Colorado Springs. So that system has been in effect for a couple of weeks now, and is working very well. Um, we do have a contract hauler that's hauling that for us on a daily basis. Um, we have continued to haul some waste to the wagon mound landfill. Uh, the, the waste that does not go into those traders, the bulky type waste, we put into a roll-off and we haul down there. So as Mr. McGowan has said, um, we really receive all types of waste at the Convenience Center on Armstrong Lane, any type of yard waste, any white goods, e-waste. Uh, we plan to, we have plans to expand that, use of that facility now. So I know people have approached me, they're, they have heard that the landfill is closed, and they're unsure of what to do. And while we're in reclamation of the landfill, uh, we have hauled solid waste out of Raton for a year or more, so nothing has changed. Uh, we still take it out there, we, we receive any, any kind of waste. But we're gonna need a lot of cooperation from the public, because this is different. When we operated a landfill, everything just went into the landfill. Um, now, because everything is transported away, we really need help on sorting everything out. And the more sorting that we do, the more efficient the system will become, and hopefully that, that can be reflected in, in future solid waste rates. So where we're aiming for with future plans is to increase recycling, and I think we can dramatically increase recycling. Uh, what we've seen is a lot of recyclable material going out in the waste stream right now, specifically cardboard and plastic. Uh, we've seen quite a bit of e-waste that's thrown in the dumpster. Um, we would just try to, to educate, work with the public about giving them options and, and helping sort this out, and everything go in the appropriate location. Now, the proposals that you'll see in the audit include, in the future, construction of a, of a new convenience center, which would allow us to really ramp up that recycling. It would be located so that it would be more convenient to the public. Uh, we are looking at full-time recycling center to give people an option to go at any time, during certain times, but, and also have available any options, any kind of waste that they want to dispose of. So that would include paint, used oil, and the things that we've talked about, the e-waste, yard waste, any of that. Um, the audits that we have for you is, it includes recommendations, it includes a plan for solid waste, but it really is a comprehensive document. Uh, it, it would, it should, it's intended to be a reference for anyone that wanted to find out where we're at. So it includes the ordinances, it includes contracts that we have in place now, it includes proposed ordinance changes. Um, so we've got a process in front of us coming up. Uh, but the proposed changes include the collection system, uh, the proposed convenience center, and really how we handle all of this material. So while some of those changes are in place, we will be coming to you over, uh, up until we make the change, and me and Mr. McGowan switch, and he's standing out here addressing you, but, uh, past that point, really over the next year. And it's gonna take some funding also, so we do plan on, on going back to the game of fish, asking them to participate with us in a, in a agreement to replace containers, that will be part of it. Uh, I would recommend that we go back to the legislature and, and fund some of the proposals that we have in here. Uh, so we've got a, a task in front of us, and I think it will continue to be a, a high priority for the city. But I'll hold up there and answer any questions. I think the, the one thing we want to bring out tonight is that the Armstrong Lane site is open for any type of waste that, that somebody has to dispose of. Uh, we have seen incidents of, of really illegal dumping or improper dumping, and I, I think it's because of confusion, maybe people are not sure where to go with the waste. So Armstrong Lane Convenience Center is the place to go. Let me hold up there and answer any questions.
It's very, how much tonnage is the city putting up per day?
Commissioner, uh, we are averaging about nineteen tons of municipal solid waste a day. Now, that really excludes the, the bulky stuff like yard waste or furniture, those kind of things. Now, we're, we're getting some results on, on recyclable material, but there's a, a great opportunity to really dramatically increase that volume. And if we can increase the recyclable, that's not going out on the nineteen tons. So, uh, we pay a, you know, a, a pretty significant amount for each ton that goes out. If we can recycle that, it's gonna be more efficient, less cost.
Are these bins that you're talking about out there at the convenience center, are they gonna be like the ones that are at the current, that type of a bin, whether recyclable?
Uh, Commissioner, what's proposed in this transition time would be a roll-off that a person can dump bulky material like yard waste. Uh, there would be a roll-off specifically for contractors to use, there would be an area for yard waste, and there would be regular three-yard containers for recyclable material. So, uh, the, the public will access the south gate at the Armstrong facility, and we'll have personnel on, on, at that south gate to direct them and help them go to the appropriate place and, and dispose of their waste.
We might consider putting some signage on the old, on the gate, on the fence for the old recycle center, so people know that we just have an event in it.
Signage is very important, and we definitely need to get a lot of signage out there, make it easier for everyone, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Next item, uh-
And then DOT?
Next, go Department of Transportation Projects first. The DOT has held their public meeting on the South Interchange, and the mayor held the meeting requested by Mr. Egan, and, and there were people, uh, public attended. And I think the lights and signage was addressed and, uh, at both meetings, and, uh, it was brought out at both meetings that people may write their recommendations to the project manager, Mr. John Duran, at Post Office Box nine six nine here in Raton. And people had their say at the public meeting with the DOT, they had their say here, uh, with the meeting with the mayor. I'd like to thank Mr. Campbell, Mr. Berry and Mr. Phillips for helping to explain the various issues as they were brought up, as we, as we looked at them out. I'd gotten a, had Mr. Duran get us some app, just like they had at the convention center, and we added up here for people to discuss. So, uh, that's where we're at on, on that situation. Uh, second, the Cutler Project will begin tomorrow. This is doing the asphalt. We were hoping from Hereford to Savage, and at first we're told that it might be, but it will not be, it'll just be from Hart to Savage. Mr. Duran told me that next year they will do Hereford to Savage and from Savage to the North Interchange. Our only problem that we're having at this time, working with Mr. Campbell, is, uh, our drainage, our, our syrup. Uh, Mr. Campbell, would you like to explain that we do have a little difficulty, and so if, when this happens, we could have a problem, and we may be getting some calls, but, uh, this is where we're at, and the problem that we have with them, when they put the two-inch overlay, they're covering everything. So that you need to know that. So, do you know, Mr. Campbell?
They don't have a line item implemented right now. We'll actually be, Mr. Berry and I will be with in the morning, I've talked to them today. Their plan was to be milling at the curb, do a two-inch overlay on the rest of Second Street, and storm sewer, sanitary sewer, and all valve boxes would be covered. Uh, we will be seeing how we can get through that, that is quite an undertaking, and so Second Street should go back and do, especially with the city and its size accrue, which was the traffic control, not possible, but the issue is just trying to maintain access to that in case you have any kind of sewer problems, water problems. We will be addressing that with DOT and trying to get that resolved quickly, because that is our primary access to a main water news, swamp sewer, and a lot of sanitary sewer under that street.
I just want you all to be aware that, uh, problem that Mr. Campbell and the city was facing.
... respond to twelve sixty State Street for thirty-year-old male subject who has collapsed.
Want you to be aware of it. If Mr. Campbell, we have both items.
... respond to twelve sixty State Street for thirty-year-old male subject who has collapsed.
We have a survey of the chief one, we actually approach and try to get some disinformation. Obviously, I'm pretty fortunate, we're looking at the, so this time, we've been doing market exactly, make sure we've got some good, like, focus on size, and I'm glad to talk to you. Uh, especially if you've got a two-inch overlay, you might get in there quickly, and if it does have to do, I could discuss that over. Trying to see how fast this is going to go.
So we'll be covering, we'll be covering the overlay that they put on downtown?
They will not include the blocks.
It doesn't include just the asphalt, Mayor.
Okay.
For a line, three downtown blocks in the end of that, nothing, or a Tiger Drive, there's actually only the asphalt.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Third item, we received notice that our map project application for Tiger Drive has been approved, a hundred and ninety-three thousand three eighty-four, of which a hundred and forty-five thousand and change comes from the state, forty-eight thousand and change is our local match. We hope to be able to go from Second Street to the railroad and further if possible, and finish next year if we continue to receive funding. And thanks to Mr. Phillips and Mr. Berry again for helping us to get that application in and get it approved. And to go along with that, our First Amendment to our co-op agreement for First Street has been approved. Reminder, it was for two hundred and eighty-one thousand, excuse me, please, six ninety-six, the state was two eleven, two seventy-two, our local match was seventy thousand four twenty-four, and remember, we got that waived. So, uh, the First Amendment agreement on that has been taken care of. So we're moving along with some projects that will, that will help us. Uh, any question on any of that from the Commission?
No, uh, I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
You were saying, if we get a map, we'll continue, but we also need to plan to fix the, the bump when, on your way to the hospital.
Oh, yes, ma'am. I didn't bring that up during our meetings. Uh, Mr. Berry, Mr. Campbell and I went out there and looked at the dip at, uh, our department ambulance, and everyone else has to go over, and I kinda knew just because of my son's office being out there, but just the three of us standing out there looking at it, all the traffic that really is out there, uh, there is a tremendous amount. Uh, Mr. Berry has looked at it, and we're looking at probably a fifty thousand dollar project, uh, taking care of that, and that is on our list, take care of things, as we can get to it, and the money's available. But we will address that problem. Yes, ma'am. Thank you for bringing it up. Uh, under recognition, appreciation and information, I'd like to thank the Commission for recognizing the city employees with an apprec- for recognizing the city employees with an appreciation day on June twenty-fifth. As was reported earlier, the city offices, all of them will be closed at one o'clock. Hopefully they will attend the Rockin' Wings and Wheels that day because that's when it goes from, from one to five and then the, the, uh, concert at that time. So that afternoon, uh, like to thank Main Street, Stan and Don Lark, George Tomstow of the Fireballs, Jamie Kilmer of the Fireballs, Mr. Berry, Mr. McMurtry, Mr. Klein Smith, Mr. Chadley, Mr. Phillips, just everyone that's involved in getting this going. Uh, it's an event that we hope that will continue and grow from each year. And we just look at the events we had. We just, the Quonners, Thames of Sugarreek, Sugarreek Canyon, Shirley Prince and all on the Fishing Derby we just had. This is coming up. The rodeo is coming up. Uh, the forty-fourth Army Band will be here on the twenty-eighth. The rendezvous is going on right now. Uh, the Balloon Festival will be here the fourth. The parade will be on the fourth, the dances and all. And we have many events here and many people involved. And we just want to say thank you to all of them. And last, you know the old saying, I tell you, I haven't told you about my grandkids and you tell me back knowing I appreciate it. Well, you don't get that luxury tonight since this is one of the few and only chances I will really get to do that. Grandmother and I wish a happy birthday to Matt and Cole, our granddaughters, our twin granddaughters, thirteen-years-old today. So with that, I'll finish and I won't say anything else.
I, I have one comment to add, Mr. McGowan. Uh, I received two phone calls this morning wanting to know why Mr. Berry had already resigned to city manager. Apparently it's on our website that we're still looking for a city manager. So.
I didn't tell you that Mr. Berry said he didn't want to follow me? He thought I had it in such bad shape that he really didn't want to do it. But I told him really, uh, I'll, like I told you all before, I'll really make him look good.
But it's just after that we're still adver- just like we're advertising for a city manager, which I informed the folks, you know, we're out and we have our city manager.
Yes, we do.
We've been there, done that many times.
That's what we have.
Would you check on that?
Is there any other business to cut the cord of commission tonight? Being done, I adjourn this meeting. Thank you.